Seven o'clock, we will now begin our May ninth Town Council meeting. Rafina, could you lead us in pledge of allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now begin with our presentations and recognitions. And Brian, if you will please read the apraxia awareness day proclamation.
It would be my pleasure. Proclamation. Whereas, May fourteenth marks childhood apraxia of speech day, during which awareness will be raised throughout Connecticut about childhood apraxia of speech, an extremely challenging speech disorder that affects one in 1,000 children. And whereas, children, childhood apraxia of speech, or CAS, causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak and is among the most severe speech defects in children. And whereas, the act of learning to speak becomes effortlessly, comes effortlessly to most children, those with apraxia require early, appropriate, and intensive speech therapy, often for many years, to learn to speak. And whereas, without appropriate speech therapy intervention, children with apraxia will have diminished communication skills but are also placed at high risk for secondary impacts in reading, writing, spelling, and other school-related skills. And whereas, that such primary and secondary impacts diminish future independence and employment opportunities and challenge the ability to become productive, contributing citizens if not resolved or improved. And whereas, public awareness about childhood apraxia of speech in Connecticut is essential for families of children with this neurological disorder and the professions and the professionals who support them to achieve the needs, the needed services for those learning to use their own voice. And whereas, our highest respect goes to these children as well as their families for their effort, determination, and resilience in the face of such obstacles. And let it be resolved that May fourteenth is Apraxia Awareness Day, and citizens of Connecticut and surrounding and surrounds are encouraged to work within their communities to increase awareness and understanding of childhood apraxia of speech, dated in Farmington, Connecticut, this ninth day of May 2023. CJ Thomas, Chair.
Thank you, Brian. Well done. I think we make that a little longer for you every year.
Please.
Number two on the agenda. We're going to, Kathy, if you'd like to introduce Officer Regario and Nash.
Okay. Tony, why don't you come on up? This is Officer Tony and our new comfort dog, Nash. And I, we wanted to introduce the council to our comfort dog and Officer Tony. And maybe, Tony, you can tell us a couple of things about, I think we've had Nash about two months now, and it's been going really well. And maybe tell the Town Council a little bit about the program and take from there.
Yeah, so we got the dog out of Puppies Behind Bars, which was a great program to deal with, and they train the dogs as service dogs and for veterans, too. So we were lucky enough to receive one of their dogs. They are nonprofit organizations, so they donated the dog to us, and we have been three months now, February, late February, we had the dog. So been in the schools mostly, and the kids love them, the teachers love them, the whole, everybody in the town tends to love him. We've been dealing with emotional kids. We've helped them turn around, put smiles on their faces, get them back to class. And we've also done a bunch of community events. We just did the Touch a Truck event. We, we've been at multiple events. He's going to try to do the torch run soon, so that should be fun, too. So, yeah, he's been great all around.
So, Tony, maybe if we could just walk him up and see, so the council can say hi to him?
And Nash has been very busy. I think you had him over at Starbucks a couple of weekends ago when we were doing the cleanup weekend. That was great. Hopefully he didn't drink too much. That might not be good later on.
He got his own apron from Starbucks with his name on it.
That's great.
He has an Instagram page, I think.
Yeah.
Hi, Nash.
I hope my wife says it's a big head at West Woods. Oh, yes, yeah. All the schools. They keep begging me to come to the other school. Try to split myself in half, or him at least. It's great.
Well, if you ever need an understudy.
And, and Tony, one of the things I wanted to ask you, maybe, I thought it was kind of interesting. Now, Nash stays with you full time, right? Maybe you can explain some of that. It's kind of a neat thing.
Yeah, so.
If you wouldn't mind, I'm sorry, you have to go back to the mic.
So, yeah, one of the, one of the things with the, this program actually, Puppies Behind Bars, they, they require you to actually be with him almost 24/7. They don't want you leaving him more than an hour or two a day. So literally, he is my right-hand man, like constantly. We, you know, he comes home, we get to, I go bowling, so he goes bowling alley with me, goes to restaurants with me, because he is certified as a service dog. He does have the public access certifications, so we are allowed to be in those places. And obviously, comes to bed with us, with me and everything. So it's, it's a great experience, and it's, you always have a friend now, because he's never leaving my side. Like I said, 24 hours a day, we're pretty much always together.
Yeah, that's kind of a, and then you have different rules about feeding treats. We've learned so many.
Yes, there's a lot of rules. They have a lot of rules. They have weight rules, so plus or minus three pounds, they tend to frown upon, so they, they tell us, you know, be strict with the treats. And so I, I've, I think I've upset a few people that wanted to give him treats, and I denied them. I know, I know.
He likes the toys.
He loves his toys, and it's funny, because I'll go around to different areas in Town Hall and different schools, and all of a sudden, toys are popping up at the secretary's desks and different people's desks, and he just can't get enough of it. So it's great to see that everyone enjoys them.
And when talking to the chief, we've talked about, so, just getting him, getting used to the program, and, but it looks like we're really going to be able to expand it in the schools and different things. So maybe he'll come back a year later, and we can talk again about some of the different things.
Yeah, it's just, just to start.
And just started.
It's all new to everybody, so.
And it's brand new. So, but so far, so good.
Oh, it's awesome, yes.
That's great.
I appreciate you coming in.
Thank you for having me.
I usually give quotes at the end of the meetings, but I've got one for Nash.
Perfect.
It's from Gilda Ratner, from those who remember the old Saturday Night Live days. "I think dogs are the most amazing creatures. They give unconditional love. For me, they are role models for being alive."
That's awesome. Thank you.
That's for Nash.
Thank you.
All right, buddy.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item C three, our presentation. Kathy, do you want to?
Yep, we have our auditors here today. If you guys want to come on up and introduce yourselves, and we have our backup information. You guys should have received your audit. And then I also sent you something this morning with some of the recommendations that we just got.
Thank you. Welcome. Good to see you again.
And maybe if you go a little closer to the microphone, I couldn't hear you.
Captain Patton on PTA, look under the ears.
All right, so we're just going to highlight some of the things we did before, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great.
So you should have those three documents, two reports, the financial statements, which you use the bigger reports, and the final case, if you want it. And then what you may be able to.
A couple of things that are a little bit different as compared to last year. The opinion on the financial statements is a new format, so the previous format listed the opinion last, now it lists the opinion first. So that's, we'll say, the major change, but the rest of the language is similar. But, and the other new thing was the lease standard, GASB 87 was implemented for June 30/22, so there's, you'll see some different accounts on Exhibit A, least payable, and then on Exhibit C for a least receivable and a deferred inflow. And then there are several different footnotes that go over with the leases. So basically, GASB decided if you have a lease, it's the same as basically having debt. So a lot of, all the accounting changes just kind of made your leases look like debt. And then when you're lessor, it booked the receivable. So if you have a 10-year lease, you have a, you still recognize it over 10 years, but, but the whole receivable gets, gets booked. So those are the major, the major changes related to that. So on the financial statements, six to eight is the opinion, again, it's unclassified opinion, which is the type of opinion you're looking to get. On, starting on page nine through 18 is the management discussion analysis. This is a good executive summary of the fiscal operations and changes compared to prior, prior year. So talk about budgetary activity, capital asset activity, changes in debt, and then changes in, in your major funds. Unassigned fund balance is also referenced in there, which at June 30 was 17.21%, which is in the area the rating agencies really like to see. So you're, you're in good position there as far as your fund balance percentage. So the actual number of unassigned, unassigned fund balance is on Exhibit C, is the 19 million 968,000, almost $20 million. You increased that by the $791,000 during the year, and we'll look a little bit where some of that came from. Your proprietary funds, change in net position, your golf course, basically after your $300,000 transfer out is basically break even at $19,000. The waste collection fund had a loss of about $94,000, and your internal service fund did very well with an increase of the $1,270,000. So your equity in that fund is about 50% of claims, which is, is on the high side, so that's an area that you, you can take a look at as far as resources. Normally, you're looking at least to cover your gap, which is normally 25%. So the fund, that fund is in good position. We did, looking at the footnotes, and again, they go on for pages and pages, I'll just point out that the new one related to the prior period adjustment on page 82 for the leases, so that prior period adjustment had no impact on any equity, but basically had impact on your assets, your liabilities, your receivables, and the deferred inflows. And then current, your activity had an impact on your financials, but the, the prior period did not. So looking at the RSI one and A and B, which is basically your, your budgetary statements, the revenues and expenditures, so your revenues on page 83, 84, in excess of budget of the $2,093,657. And the drivers of that were property taxes were under budget by the 310, and governmental grants were above budget by 1.649, most of that coming from that state-owned property or tiered pilot, as they call it now, of about $1,550,000. And then charges for services were above budget by 788, and that's being, still being driven by building permits, conveyance taxes, and other town clerk revenues due to the real estate market. The COVID seemed to kind of drive a lot of transaction, and most towns are still seeing the benefit of that. On expenditure side, basically, break even, $61,000 underspent, and town was 45.5 of that, and education was $13,000 of that amount. So looking at your pension funds, last year, we had really good news based on where the market was, and you had, your percentage funded went up. Unfortunately, this year, as of June 30/22, they went back, so you had a decrease in, in your funded percentage of 14.41%. And basically, that's all due to the decrease in fair value of the $12,673,000. And then OPEB, similar, as far as that, there's no percentage funded, because you're, you're pay-as-you-go for OPEB, but the liability was at $43,673,000. And basically, that, I guess the library, the liability decreased because of some changes in assumptions by, by $20,147. So in that case, the market had no impact, it was the change in assumptions that, mostly being the discount rate going up, they gave you, that lowered your liability by the $13, 000.
On your federal and state single audits, which is the smaller report you received, we had no findings or question costs. In the federal single audit, we tested the education stabilization fund, and in the state single audit, we tested the tiered payment in lieu of taxes and the community connectivity grant programs. In the communication with those charged with governance, which was the short letter you received, we discuss our responsibility, which is to form and express an opinion about whether the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. It also indicates that we are independent. We had no uncorrected misstatements and no material adjustments. New applicable GASB statements include GASB 96 for subscription-based information technology arrangements, which is, will be implemented in fiscal year '23. For that, you'll need to begin to gather and review all IT contracts and agreements, and we'll be sending out communication with management with guides on implementation for that. And coming up in 2025 is GASB 101, uncompensated absences, which updates the recognition and measurement guidance for that liability, which will only affect your Exhibits A and B, the government-wide financial statements. And additionally, you've received the recommendations, which include town purchasing and accounts payable. We have a recommendation on increasing the segregation of duties. Town journal entries, implementing formal documentation of the approval of the journal entries. Education purchasing and accounts payable, implementing a vendor approval process and segregation of duties. Cafeteria cash receipts, we recommend those be recorded based on the sales rather than the cash received. Student activities, we recommend there be segregation of duties relating to deposits and record-keeping. The scholarship funds, we recommend those are recorded in the general ledger. In general ledger maintenance, we also recommend all activity is recorded in the financial accounting software and in accordance with GAAP, so revenues and balance sheet accounts are included as well as expenditures. Education accounts payable, we recommend that the recording of accounts payable and encumbrances is corrected to be in accordance with GAAP. Education budget transfers, we recommend that the Board of Ed's review and approval be formally documented. And as a best practice, we recommend the town implement a fraud policy.
Right.
Questions?
Just one thing, just so we're all clear. So the audit was, what is it called? It's considered a clean audit?
Yes.
Okay, so it was a clean audit, and you did have a list of recommendations, and just for the council, that between the Board of Education, our finance director, superintendent of schools, we do work towards those recommendations every year, but they are just, they're recommendations, they're not showing that we don't have a clean audit. So just a statement.
Thank you. Questions?
Thanks, CJ. Yeah, thank you, thank you for coming today. I have a question on the annual comprehensive financial report on page three, where you're talking about the COVID-19 pandemic specifically. And you wrote that currently, there's a minimal negative, negative fiscal impact on the town, and most of the cost the town incurred due to the pandemic was from federal grants set up for that purpose, and the tax collections didn't experience a downturn due to the pandemic, and some of our non-tax revenue categories actually experienced increases. And I was just wondering, with your experience with other municipalities, was this the same type of outcome that other municipalities had, or did other municipalities have, you know, a downturn in tax receipts or some other kind of outcome during the pandemic?
First, I just want to clarify, this is written by the town finance director, not us.
Okay, gotcha.
Just so you understand the source.
Sure.
Written by the finance director, and, and yes, your, your experience is, is consistent. Tax collections actually went up during COVID, and now they're going back down a little bit. But during COVID, I think everybody had to be home, and they protected their home, and everybody paid their taxes. But now it was a little bit more comfortable, and then we see it going a little bit the other way. But, but everyone actually did better on tax collections, pretty much across the board over our 25 clients, as far as the collection percentage and that type of thing. And then I talked about, I referenced, you know, some of your revenue exceeding budget, the building permits, everyone staying home, so they're doing stuff at home and improving their house and that type of thing. And then the real estate, the town clerk, their fees and the conveyance tax, pretty much across the board, again, all our clients had those same spikes. So your, your, your experience is.
Similar experience with the other clients that you had, other towns. Thank you.
So you're not going to say we're better than everybody else?
That's what we like to hear.
I'm sure in some ways, yes, everybody has their strengths.
That's okay. You don't have to respond to that. Other questions?
I just had one about the fund balance. You mentioned that we're in good position there, basically. I think that's what you said. But does that count? Because we just, for a project, the 1928 building, we will be taking some of the fund balance. Does that, no?
No, we, for the budget, we are.
Sorry, for the budget. Does that include the, the funds that we're taking, or is this before?
It's going to, it's going to be next year's audit. It will show it.
Okay.
Yeah, this, this year's audit took into account if you used any fund balance for '23.
Okay, so it's, it'll be the following year? Got it? All right, thank you.
Trying to be proactive, so. Any other questions? Okay, no, I think this is great. Thank you. The, I think last year, we took your recommendations to heart. I believe we followed through on.
Most of them.
Most of them. So between the town and the Board of Education, we'll be doing the same again this year, and hopefully you'll come back again next year and be happy to see us. All right. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item D, public hearing. I believe we have none today. E, new items. Joseph. Rafina.
Yes.
She has the new item.
I do have the new. I'd like to make a motion to add L five to the agenda, which is an appointment.
Great. Have a motion for a new appointment. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We have added L five to the agenda. Item F, public comment. As always, we will begin public comment with those here in person. Please step to the podium, state your name and address, and then we will go on to those online, doing the same thing, stating your name and address. We're trying to keep comments to five minutes if we can, in respect for everyone else's time. Yes, sir.
Hello. Thank you, Chairman Thomas and council members. My name is Dean Diarch, 29 Basswood Road in, here in Farmington. There are three topics I'd like to bring up this evening. I realize I only have a few minutes, so I'll try to keep each of them very brief. First, I'd like to acknowledge and thank both Superintendent Greider and Police Chief Ryan. For those of you that may not be aware, last week, they sent out a letter via email to parents of Farmington students about the importance of firearm safety and specifically safe storage of firearms. There's a lot of good information in this letter, and so therefore, my request to the Town Council is to consider publishing something similar to this letter that could be shared with all Farmington residents. Second item is somewhat related. It's a good time to remind people of Connecticut's Risk Protection Order, many times referred to as red flag laws. So Connecticut is one of about 20 states in the country that has a risk protection order, which is a legal way with due process protections for anyone to warn the police about a person they believe is at immediate risk of suicide or harm to others and who may have access to firearms. The Risk Protection Order process obviously is only as effective as people's awareness of the program and how it works. Now, brochures such as this one are currently on display and available to residents here in the Town Hall. They're also at the library, the police department, and the community and senior center. However, I would once again like to ask the council to consider a communication to Farmington residents concerning Connecticut's Risk Protection Order and how the process works. And finally, I'm pretty sure that you are all familiar with a nonprofit organization in town known as Services for the Elderly, which has an office in the community center. Services for the Elderly has been assisting seniors with their desired home lifestyle needs since 1965, and this is accomplished through a number of programs and services such as Meals on Wheels, free medical transportation, and a medical equipment closet, as well as several other programs. And you're probably aware of Services for the Elderly, because it does receive some funding from the town, but much of the funding to operate Services for the Elderly comes from grants, donations, and fundraising efforts. And this year, Services for the Elderly has decided to hold a charity fundraising golf event at Punxsutawney Country Club on August the second. And currently, Services for the Elderly is actively seeking sponsors, donors, volunteers, and of course, golfers. So people can get more information or sign up at Services for the Elderly's website, which is services@farmingtonseniors.org. But once again, it's only as good as our ability to make people aware of it. So once again, I would like to ask the council to consider helping in the publicizing of the event to residents of Farmington. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much for your comment. Okay, we will now go to online comments. Do we have anyone online who would wish to speak?
We do.
Do we have anyone named Jay online who would wish to speak?
We do. Jay Toulon.
Jay, you're on. Can you hear us?
Jay, you just need to unmute.
Sorry, sorry. Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay. Jay Toulon, 39 Timberline Drive. Just want to give a quick mention that May is Jewish American Heritage Month. It's something I've been aware of for a while, but it's worth mentioning, a number of communities do a variety of things. There's actually a proclamation that a number of communities have adopted. It took me a while to actually get ahold of the proclamation, so I don't think I'm going to really have an opportunity to get that to you, to have you be able to consider it. But it is worth a mention that it is Jewish American Heritage Month. I also reached out to the Farmington Historical Society, who referred me to the Jewish Historical Society, of which Lance Goldberg is a member, to try and see if I can get some information about notable fellow Jews that come from Farmington. I haven't heard back yet, so again, just a quick mention, and it is something that might be worth your attention, I guess, next year. But I appreciate your time, as always. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Others online?
No.
Anyone else, I can't?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, we will close public comment. Moving on to item G.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the April 3, 2023 regular Town Council meeting minutes.
Second? We have a motion, a second. Any questions or comments about the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item H, do we have any written communications or appeals?
No.
None. Moving on to item I, reports of the committees. 1928 Building Committee, do we have anything new?
Just that. We got the vote passed, two to one margin was done a couple of weeks ago at our vote. So now the committee is tasked with making sure that, you know, going back, relooking at everything, getting their numbers in order, and to stay within our budget, and start to go over plans and really designing it and coming through with everything.
Excellent, thank you. Great job getting us past that large hurdle. And Farmington High School Building Committee.
So on Saturday, May 13, at 9:00 AM, we're having a topping off ceremony. So I know that the invites have gone out to the Building Committee, the council, I believe, and other, a couple of the groups. But they're going to be doing a ceremonial, because we. another couple of the groups. But they're going to be doing a ceremonial because we felt it a little unnecessary to do a digging ceremony before the second referendum passed. So we held off and put this in line instead.
Wise move.
And Kat, what, it's nine o'clock on Saturday morning?
Yes, it's from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. It's rain or shine, and it's open to the community as well. So it's marking a significant milestone in the project, so we're very excited.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Green Efforts Committee.
Green Efforts. So April 22, which was Earth Day, Saturday, we had our townwide cleanup, where we collected 3,960 pounds of trash. Great turnout. We also teamed up with the Lions Club to have cans and recyclables kind of separated, which was short notice, but a good turnout on that. So thank you to everybody who helped. Groups like Ms. Porter's or even Tungus, and a lot of individuals, Girl Scout groups. I mean, it was truly a community event. Even Edward, I think, came back three times with eighty chairs buried deep in the woods along the river where nobody else ventured.
I went deep in there.
So, no, great turnout. Couldn't have asked for any more, any better.
Great, thank you. And I know most of those up here on the council were involved in that and doing something. A lot of people out and about during that day. It was great to see so many people picking up trash on that one particular day. Just a reminder, there is no rule against picking up trash all year long, so feel free to bring your bags with you and continue to clean up.
One last thing. This year, we started where you could start collecting on April 1st. So come next year, we'll do a better job of communicating that. So we did have a couple of people bring, you know, carloads of stuff that were working far beyond just that day. So to the point of all year long, we will actually do the read-ins for anything for April 1st to the next.
Excellent. Great job on that. Land Acquisition Committee.
Nothing new to report.
Okay, Racial Equality Task Force.
Yeah, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. In our upcoming meeting, we're going to start looking at all of our goals that we have focused on. We're going to see what attention needs to be to fix on our goals and look at our accomplishment over the next two years to start moving forward.
Great, thank you. Okay, item J, reports of chair and liaisons. We start with the town chair, and that would be me. Joe mentioned that the 1928 building passed two to one in referendum. Very happy to see that. Also, the budget passed three to one, and Rhodes, it is no surprise it passed, but that was eight to one. So overwhelming wins for the three items. So very nice job to the council for getting things on there and clearly coming in with the proper numbers that made our town comfortable with going through with all those things. We had Nash in here, our comfort dog. That's just a reminder that coming up in June, you should be renewing your dog's license. So you can bring your dog in, and while you're doing that, you can enter your dog in the top dog contest. The top dog every year gets license number one. And this year, hopefully, we can have both our canine, Ozzy, and our comfort dog, Nash, helping choose the winner. My dog, Mocha, will be home eating snacks nowhere near there at the time. So. Also, this Friday, it is Bike to School Day for Union School. They do this every year. We did take a little bit of sabbatical during COVID, but it's a great event. Number of the students, which grows every year, ride from the rails to trails. Some, the older kids as far as Burlington, riding right into Union School. We have the police along the way, making sure it's safe at all the crossings. And this year's challenge will be getting across Unionville Bridge because the sidewalk on that side is closed. So they, if you're driving through that area early in the morning before nine o'clock, please be patient if you've got to slow down and stop for a little bit. Also, Saturday, the Hindu community will be holding the Guru Vandana event at the community center. That is an event that will honor our community teachers. And I will just repeat what we just heard earlier. Services for the Elderly will be having a golf tournament on August 2nd, so you can go to their website and find more details on that. And as Jay mentioned, May is Jewish American Heritage Month. So just a few other notes. With that, I will close the chair report. Going on to Conservation and Inland Wetlands.
So Inland Wetlands had a meeting on May 3, where they unanimously voted to approve the construction of an in-ground pool at 11 Piquabuck Lane. They also discussed a habitat restoration plan at 9 Apple Tree Lane. The Conservation Commission discussed the 2023 Household Hazardous Waste Collection and Townwide Cleanup Data. That was presented at that meeting. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Board of Education.
Okay. They last met on May 1, where they acknowledged 14 Farmington educators who will receive an award for their 25 years in education at the graduation ceremony on June 13. They also voted to approve Farmington Public Schools' participation in the healthy food option, which complies with the Connecticut Nutrition Standards for all food offered for sale to students. Food that's sold in connection with an event, for example, after school or on the weekend, will be exempted from that program. They also thanked the Farmington Valley Muslim Center in Avon, who brought the Board of Education a basket and extended their gratitude to the Board of Ed for recognizing Ramadan. So Ramadan, for some of you who know, is a month-long fasting. And for students especially, they're given space in the library and other places where they are not among other students eating lunch. And as somebody who has fasted for many years, since I was seven, I can understand how that would be really helpful for a younger student. And that was about, they discussed a couple of other things, but those were the highlights in their meeting. Oh, one other thing, and I've mentioned this before, so here's another plug. For Project Graduation, it's the last day. They really, really need volunteers. Please do not let the senior parents go to Project Graduation to chaperone their own kids. The kids don't want that, and the parents certainly don't want that. So for some of you who know, Project Graduation is this all-night party. Joe and I did it a couple of years ago. I'm sure a number of the council members have done it also. If you have older children, you understand. The town turns out for these kids. It's alcohol-free, it's drug-free, it's their night of celebration. And what parents need to do of younger children is sort of step forward and help to chaperone. They've got games, they've got prizes. It's a lot of fun, not only for the kids, but for the chaperones. So if you can, please go to projectgraduation23, that's actually 23projectgradfhs@gmail.com, if you can just give a little bit of your time.
Even if your kid has graduated, you can still come back and help.
Absolutely, because you understand the process.
Very good. It's a fun event. Done it many years. Not when either of my children were there, because I was banned from it. But it's a great event. You can do anything from help with parking outside. Is it, where is it going to be held?
It's going to be at Big Sky.
Big Sky, which is where it's been for years. And inside, as Rafina was saying, there are games, there are events, there's usually a hypnotist there.
There are DJs. There are multiple rooms with a DJ.
So it's a lot of fun. And if you're someone who doesn't sleep much, you can always take that midnight to 2:00 a.m. shift, which oddly enough is the toughest one to fill. So feel free to go and try and join in. Thank you, Rafina. The Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee has been meeting. We were, actually, we met at our last meeting at the new Union, Welcome to Unionville sign, which is great, just on the other side of the Unionville Bridge. It also has Wayfinders, a QR code on the back of it. Tremendous sign, so thank you to all in the town who were involved in helping that happen. It's a great sign. If you have a chance to pass that little pocket park and take a look, please do so. Also, we're trying to get a water fountain along the trail. We're still working on that. We're also looking into grants to help fund that. We'd like one that could survive the winter and won't freeze up, so just one little challenge. It's a little more expensive that way. Economic Development.
Yes, the EDC is hosting a business breakfast event on May 17 at the Farmington Polo Club from 7:45 a.m. through 9:30 a.m. The keynote speaker will be Mr. Nathan Grube, the Travelers' Championship Tournament Director. This year's Travelers' Championship has been designated an elevated event, which means that the best players will be competing for increased prize money. It is sure to be one of the most popular tournaments of the year. Nathan has been the tournament director since 2005 and will highlight the tournament's many economic benefits and how they raise area charities, local economies, and the state economy. And the next EDC meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, May 10.
Great, thank you. Farmington Historic District Commission.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of things. The First Church received a certificate of appropriateness for an additional panel on their sign out front. The Farmington, the bank, which is the Bank of America, received a certificate of appropriateness for a new surface on the outside of the building, to spruce that up a little bit, so it's nice. Nice, sir. Nice, sir.
I can't wait to see that. If you're going to make that nice, go ahead.
Nice, sir. And one of the many nice neighbors that we have in the Historic District reached out to us for approval of putting in a new light fixture, just to make sure it's within the historic, you know, specifications, which is really nice. And that is what our Historic Commission is all about, making sure that we're true to our history. We're also, there's also, we're looking for some information on, an update on the door for the Hartford Baking Company. We've reached out, we haven't heard yet, but I'm sure we will, to see when the new door is going in, which will be nice to see. So we're just waiting for a response there. Our next meeting is going to be on next Tuesday, the 16th, at 5:00 o'clock, right here. And that's all I have.
Very good, thank you. When they get the door, will they have an opening?
Only if the door is open.
There you go. Housing Authority.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Human Relations Commission.
The Human Relations Commission hosted a diversity event for our commission members on April 20 at Member Donna Membrino's house. The idea was to bring food from your specific culture and discuss it with others in attendance. Their next meeting is May 24.
Great, thank you. Library Board.
Search for new director continues, but that is wrapping up, and I believe they'll have someone in place soon. Their next meeting is next Wednesday, May 17.
Thank you. Town Planning and Zoning. That's been quiet, right?
Well, funny you say. So TBZ has been incredibly busy. The major items are, have actually been continued, meeting after meeting. So there's a few big items that have not been voted on, but I believe they'll be voted on for our next meeting. I'll have a report on them. I did want to say specifically that the members of the Town Planning and Zoning Commission and everybody in the Town Planning and Zoning Office, they've had three meetings in a row that have gone either to midnight or past midnight. Lots of public comment, and they're really doing their best to sort out some, you know, tricky, or I guess, I don't want to say contentious, but some things that people really care about, and they're trying to come up with the best solution for everybody in town. So it's a really tough commission to be on, and so thanks to everybody that's on that.
Thank you, Keith. And I will mention, because they've had some very long meetings, as from time to time, many of our different boards and commissions do, just a reminder to everyone out there, these are all voluntary positions. We are using our free time to just try and help the town and make it a little bit better. So please be respectful to the people on all the boards and commissions. If you want to say something bad, do it after the meeting. You know, we're just here to try and help out a little bit. So little decorum would be nice. Unionville Historic District Commission.
Yes, the Unionville Historic District Commission met on May 4. The commission approved a certificate of appropriateness for 1761 Farmington Avenue for replacement of porch framing, decking, and lattice. Also, the EDC Director, Rose Ponti, gave a presentation on the opportunity to create municipal cultural districts in town. In 2019, the Connecticut State Legislature adopted a state statute permitting cultural districts. Districts require at least one public meeting, a resolution from the town council, and an advisory board to oversee the district. Our Assistant Town Planner, Garrett Daigle, has been working with Rose to determine the limits of the district. However, Rose and Garrett could not include both Unionville and Farmington villages in one district, so Rose spoke with a representative of the Greater Hartford Arts Council, and towns are actually permitted to have multiple cultural districts. So we could have one for Unionville and one for Farmington. And the commissioners on the Unionville Historic District Commission agreed that they would be in favor of having a separate district for Unionville and one for Farmington as well. So more to come on that.
Okay, thank you. Unionville Village Improvement Association.
Nothing new to report.
Okay. Water Pollution Control Authority.
Yes. Last month, over on Patrick Flood Road, they had a forced main break. That part was repaired, but as they were repairing it, they saw that they should probably plan ahead and start figuring out the next process at Patrick Flood Road to fix it from the point break all the way up to the overpass. So that would be happening in the next coming year. Our town people there continue to produce low nitrogen levels, which is great, and our next meeting is tomorrow night.
Great, thank you. And the WPCA, the water leaving the plant there is generally cleaner than the water in the river, upriver. So they do a tremendous job of cleaning the water. It's one of those projects in town that we love it the most when we don't notice it's there. So thank you to everybody on the WPCA. Any other liaison reports that we have missed? Seeing none. Moving right on to item K, the report of the town manager.
You have my written report, but just a couple of things. Just a reminder that we are having a parade this year, and the parade will form at 9:30 a.m. at the corner of Garden Street and Farmington Avenue, and step off will be at 10:00 a.m. So that's on Memorial Day. I did make a copy of a Hartford Business Journal article, and I really thought it was a very favorable article for the town of Farmington, so I wanted to include that in your packet, just in case you did not read the Hartford Business Journal. But they talked about the economic conditions in Farmington, especially with our manufacturing. So I thought that was a great article, and Rose did a great job representing us in the article. We're having a Juneteenth celebration with our task forces. It's going to be a regional event, which will take place on Saturday, June 17, at the Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Centers. So that's happening. Johnny mentioned our Farmington Cleanup Day. And lastly, we're really pleased that in April, Moody's Investor Services reaffirmed Farmington's AAA credit rating, the highest bond rating a municipality can receive. And I left at your places, which we did do a bond sale, and there's more details about that in the bond sale. But one of the things that I did want to note is that, where did I read it? What Joe wrote. It's the highest ranking that could be assigned to municipal debt. This achievement also means that Farmington is one of the only six towns in the state of Connecticut to hold a AAA rating from both Moody's and S&amp;P. So we went for both ratings. So we did that, and the rate is 3.27 percent, the net, the true interest cost. So we were pleased with that, and it's going to help our upcoming budget, because what we projected was going to be higher than that. So all in all, a very good bond sale for us. And thank you, Joe, and your team for doing it and getting ready for the bond sale. And we're really very thrilled about both our AAA ratings that we got.
Yeah, that is great. After beginning the debt for the new high school, we obviously still have the debt on for the WPCA. That's fantastic that we got reaffirmed at that AAA. That will help us in our future bond issues that we'll be looking forward to with the rest of the high school. And this is, the rates that we're looking at here, our average rate is considerably lower than what we originally forecast when we're talking about the high school project. So these are all very positive things. So again, thank you, Joe. You got in some great borrowing at incredibly low rates, and this, we're still coming in under a lot of expected rates. So thank you. And for those of you at home who can't see, we've got some very nice colorful flyers for our parade, red, white, and blue, flag on the front and all that. So thank you, Kathy, and your staff for getting that done. With that, you have the town manager's report, Joe.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the town manager's report.
Second?
We have a motion to second. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Appointments.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for L4, for Matt Hudvagner as Justice of the Peace.
Second?
We have a motion to second. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
You guys don't want to hear anything about Matt Hudvagner?
I asked for questions or comments.
Can I tell you a little bit about Matt? I have my thing. I have to read it. Okay, so Matt is a business professional with over 10 years of experience supporting ESPN at the Walt Disney Company in day-to-day finance and accounting activities. Matt is currently a commissioner on the Town Planning and Zoning Commission and a former Board of Assessment Appeals Commissioner. He's a father of twin boys, and he's long been engaged as an advocate for our schools in our town, and he's going to be a great addition.
Great. Okay. Item L5.
Yes. Like to make a motion, L5, to appoint Nora Brown for the Human Relations Commission for a two-year term starting July 1, 2023, extending
for a two-year term starting July 1st, 2023, extending to June 30th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you like to say anything about that?
I would like to say something. Thank you very much. Nora is a local real estate agent in the Farmington Valley. In addition to serving on the Board of the Hartford International University for Religion and Peace, she is a Farmington Valley American Muslim Center's Chairwoman of the Interfaith Committee. That sounds like a mouthful, but she's a wonderful person. She's got kids in the Farmington Public School system. Actually, two of them are in college now, but her youngest is, and she would also make a fantastic addition to this commission.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. And thank you for both of you for volunteering your time. If any of you would like to go online, we always have spots showing any open boards, committees, or commissions. And if you have any interest in November for running for any office, you can either file a petition on your own, or you can approach either of the parties to voice your interest. Moving on to Item N, old business. I believe we have none. So do N, new business. Item 1.
Yes. Like to make a motion for Agenda Item N1, to recommend the release of a 76-square-foot portion of Vista easement in the favor of Town of Farmington to Brianna and Natalie Hint, in exchange for 234-square-foot Vista easement in favor of the Town of Farmington from Brianna and Natalie Hint from 21 Eli Road, R8 Zone, for referral to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission for report under Section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy.
You saw the letter that was included in the packet, but in summary, the property owners inadvertently encroached on 76 square feet of the conservation easement with the town of Farmington. The attached letter from the property owners expressed their regret and proposed that an additional 234 square feet of land be incorporated into the conservation easement as restitution. Town staff recommends the exchange of the 76 feet in favor of the 234 square feet. Note that this is just a referral for an 8-24, and then it would come back to us for the release of the easement if the council decided to do that. I think that the owners are sorry that it happened. They've gone through the correct process, they've paid fines, they've done everything they need to do, and so the staff feels strongly that this would, this is a good solution.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda Item N2, to set the property tax rate and solid waste special service charge for the 2023-2024 fiscal year, as attached in our paperwork.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy.
So this is, you're setting the property tax rate, and this is the budget, and you'll see the attachment, and the property tax rate of 24.21 mils, and you're also setting the solid waste charge set at $268.
24.21, that seems pretty low. Are there any local towns that have lower?
I don't think so.
Checking. Okay. Any questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda Item N3, make a motion to award bid number 333, transportation and disposal of sewage sludge to H.I. Stone &amp; Son of Southbury, Connecticut, at a contract cost of $148 per wet ton.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy.
The purpose of this motion is to award a contract for the transportation and disposal of sewage sludge from the wastewater treatment plant to a disposal site operated by the MDC Commission. Bids for the service were opened on April 12th. The town received one bid, as shown on the attached tally sheet. Our H.I. Stone submitted the only bid at $148 per wet ton, estimating that there will be 4,250 wet tons of sludge per year. The annual contract value would be $629,000. Funds are available in the WPCA budget. This would be the third time that H.I., H.I. Stone &amp; Son were awarded the bid for service, and we've reviewed the contract and their performance, and we're recommending that we continue on with them.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. And four.
And Agenda Item N4, make a motion that Section 55-1 of the Town Code of Ordinances be waived, and that H.I. Tech Fire and Safety Incorporated of Farmingdale, New York, be awarded a contract to supply turnout gear to the Farmington Fire Department at a cost of $90,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy.
The capital budget contains funds to purchase new turnout gear to replace existing old and worn-out gear used by the town's firefighters. The company that traditionally supplied the gear to the town's fire service no longer carries the brand preferred by the firefighters. In researching available suppliers, it was determined that H.I. Tech Fire and Safety, Inc. of Farmingdale, New York, was the nearest vendor to offer the brand used by the fire department. Unfortunately, they are not on a state or regional cooperative bid that the town could utilize to procure the clothing. The fire staff would like to stay with the branded gear that they've been using, and therefore would like to purchase the gear from High Tech. Based on the recommendation, we are requesting that the Town Council waive the bidding requirement and award this to High Tech.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Just one question. Is, is the pricing in line with what we've been paying along the way with other suppliers?
Joe?
The, well, the, I'm trying to think this up. The equipment is the same equipment that we've been buying all along, but like everything else, the prices have gone up, so it is a little bit more expensive, but there, unfortunately, the, the local vendors, there aren't any local vendors in the state of Connecticut, so the nearest vendor we could find was in New York. Their prices are a little bit more than they've been in the past.
But reasonable.
It's not extravagant, but it's, you know, it is still within budget. We still will be able to outfit everybody's needs to outfit, so it's just, you know, it's just, normally, we try to put a couple of thousand dollars extra in there. We're not going to have a couple of thousand dollars extra. It'll pretty much be right at the budget amount.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to ask.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda Item N5, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Town Manager to sign the 184 and 199 Town Farm Lease Agreements between the Phillips family and the town of Farmington with the proposed modifications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy.
There's a lot of documents here, but most of them are lease documents. But in summary, the town of Farmington has a lease agreement with Subedge Farm, a business that runs by the Phillips family on the Fisher Farm property since 2013. The current lease was executed for a three-year term from March 1st, 2020, to February 28th, 2023. The lease requires that the Phillips family to make an annual payment of $1 to the rent for the four-bedroom house on the barn, plus 10 community-supported agricultural shares to be donated to the Farmington Food Pantry, valued at approximately $5,000. With the last renewal in 2020, a rental fee for the land was added to both lease agreements at a fee of $35 per acre. This is consistent with the payments made by farmers who lease other farmland in town. For Subedge Farm, this is an annual payment of $991 for the use of 28.34 acres and is paid to the town annually. Now that Subedge Farm has been operating on the Fisher Farm for 10 years, I'm recommending that the following modifications in the attached lease. One, I would increase the lease term to five years. Two, rental payment. In 2013, the original lease was formulated to provide Roger Phillips and his family the financial opportunity to start up a viable farm business. After 10 years in the business, a monthly rent is suggested for the four-bedroom house that is leased from the town. I'm proposing the following monthly rental structure would phase into an affordable housing rent by the last year of the lease. So it would be, the first year would be $200 a month, year two, 400, year three, 600, year four, 800, and year five would be $1,000, which is consistent at this time with what an affordable four-bedroom house would cost. So that is our recommendation. We would be monitoring the rental structure, and the Subedge Farm does require to submit financial information annually, so if there is a change in the farm's economic position in either direction that drastically would affect the rents, we would come back to modify the rental structure. But we get a, a financial information annually.
Great. Questions or comments?
Subedge Farm is great.
Yeah.
Just a comment. I mean, being in town for a long time, they've, I mean, that area, there was years that I didn't, I don't think that we saw the same kind of use in community events that happen there now, so I think it's great that they're going to be there for another five years at least, right?
Yeah. It's, they do a wonderful job for us, and it's a definitely, it's very different out there than what it was 10 years ago, for sure.
Hard to believe it's been 10 years.
Yeah.
Want to quickly, any other questions, comments? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously.
Agenda Item N6, to approve the transfer on collectible property taxes to the Suspense Tax Book.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy.
So according to state law, the tax collector has recommended the 2023 Suspense Tax Book. This book has been compiled for the purpose of identifying sums that may be uncollectible, and no way does it represent a cancellation of the tax. The tax office will continue to exercise every possible avenue to collect the unpaid tax. Those who own motor vehicles cannot register a vehicle in the state of Connecticut until the tax is paid. The total sum is $4,697. And so you're approving a transfer of the uncollectible taxes to the suspense book.
Okay.